All right, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 13th, 2024, meeting of the Board of Education for Arlington Heights School District 25. As we welcome those of you that have been here before and new visitors, I want to remind everyone that our meetings are when the school conducts its business, and they are open to the public. Because we are an elected governmental body, we can only take action by majority vote in a public meeting like this one. We welcome the public to listen and observe, and we have community input sections on the agenda if you have questions or comments on the business of the board. We now reconvene the meeting after returning from closed session, and I call it to order. So Ms. O'Brien, if you could please call the roll.
Oliniechek?
Here.
Nierman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scapalato?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Serniglio?
Here.
Thank you, and if you could please stand, if you were able, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so to begin, we don't have any recognitions or presentations, so we will go right to our board communications, and so I ask my colleagues, are there any updates from our board members? It is summertime, so hopefully everyone's having a good summer, and so if we'll go to EdRed. Now, Kevin, you already said you don't have an update, but we did have the Legislative Breakfast yesterday morning. Anisha, would you do the honors of sharing a little bit about that?
Good evening, everybody. The EdRed event was really good. It was the EdRed Legislative Meeting, and it's always a great roundtable discussion that we have with state legislators who are present, area board members, administrators, and thank you, Dr. K, for being there as well with us. We're grateful that our representatives from this area, Senator Mark Walker and State Rep Nicole Gressi, were there, and so lots of great discussion about different topics, and they heard our concerns, and so a lot of problem-solving solutions, and kind of just making them aware of what as educators and what as school district advocates that we're going through in our own district. So it was a really great meeting, and it was hosted at Schaumburg School District 54, so a huge thanks to them for hosting as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that, Anisha, and I guess we can roll right into IASB, if you have updates for that.
Yeah, IASB, just to give you my board colleagues' update, as you know, we will be presenting. We've been invited to present again. We've consecutively presented three times now at the state conference, and we're being invited again, and we have started our preparations. So, Dr. K, and big thanks to Kevin, he is jumping on the bandwagon, and we're prepping and getting our, you know, rehearsing our materials, so that when we go out there in November, we'll be ready to share and learn, and we'll have our board colleagues in the audience as well, so we're really excited. And always thanks to Lana, already putting in lots of work to help us get organized for the weekend before Thanksgiving, that we will be at the state board conference, learning and sharing, like I said.
Great.
And I think we have an administrator presenting as well, don't we, Dr. K? I think Adam is presenting this year, is that correct?
Adam, Adam is also presenting. He would love being called out for it as well.
We see you, Adam. So Adam will be presenting, and we will all go to cheer his session as well. Okay.
Well, thank you, Anisha, for both those reports. So Liz, can you share with us about NSSCO?
Absolutely. So NSSCO starts a little bit earlier than we do, so they are getting ready to do that. They are, I should say, we are, since I'm on the strategic plan team, launching the strategic plan, which will be starting with interviews. I will continue to update you all as that goes through the year. At the last meeting, Dr. K was able to attend, and Diane Kafka, who's there all the time, was really nice, and it was wonderful for Dr. K to be there. Thank you for coming. I know everyone was very excited to meet you in person and get kind of an update on what's going on here, so thank you. Other than that, their main focus right now is setting goals for the year, and lots of interesting stuff, and as that continues on, I will continue to report on that.
Thank you, Liz, and thanks for your service on a second board and reporting back to us. We really appreciate it. All right, so now is the time in our agenda we set for community input. This is the first of two opportunities. If a member of the public wishes to address any item on tonight's agenda, please complete one of the blue slips provided by the table by the door and hand that card to Lana O'Brien. Please note on your card if you wish to speak now at the first community input or later if we do have a second community input opportunity. So I do have a blue slip, so I'm going to take this opportunity to share that the opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. Public input can be helpful to the board as we strive to make the best decisions for the district. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and operate its meeting, and in the spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to adhere to the following guidelines. Number one, address the board only at the time provided on the agenda and only after being recognized by the board president. Two, identify yourself and be brief. Your comments must be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may shorten this allowed time in order to allow the maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. Three, please be respectful and courteous. The board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. The board typically does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period, but we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community. As always, if you have included your email on the blue slip, someone will get back to you regarding any questions or concerns you have. So with that, we do have one blue slip for this first opportunity. Mr. Patrick Cole, if you'd come forward, please. Welcome, Mr. Cole.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Don't go over time. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. K, and members of the community. Thank you for allowing me to bring forth my concern, which is the district's reliance on district policy over what is best for the child. Instead, they are denying children that show promise the opportunities for growth. To begin, my youngest tested, or sorry, began preschool at a local private school, and although he missed the cutoff by less than a month, he was allowed to test into kindergarten and passed with flying colors. During that year, he had math and I read his scores, nationally normed test scores in the 80th percentile. However, when we tried to transform him into our district that we pay for, we were told that he would have to repeat kindergarten where he was already very successful due to the missing cutoff date and not being in the 95th percentile when compared to first graders, even though he was only in kindergarten. Okay? I talked to four administrators throughout the district. No, no, no. I haven't reviewed your case, but the people before me said no, and I'm not going to overrule them. Okay? He completed first grade this year, and he still has high scores on the national norm test and outstanding report cards. Okay? Now we get to my fifth-grade daughter, who's in the district, who scored in the 93rd percentile on the spring map in math, and had a near-perfect report card with a single exception of spelling. However, she was denied entrance into the accelerated math program, even though she's in the 93rd percentile. When petitioned, the district again said no, citing that she missed one component of the district's criteria for placement, and when asked, was told that there would be no probationary placement. She couldn't even try. According to the Illinois Accelerated Placement Act enacted in 2018, the accelerated placement is open to all children that demonstrate high ability and may benefit from accelerated placement. My daughter has demonstrated the ability. Her report card shows that she is capable of the challenge, and if the concern is she'd be skipping a grade, when you compare her score from the 93rd percentile to the sixth graders in the spring, she was in the 88th percentile, still well above grade level. She has studied all summer, and quite obviously, she's got parental support, all of my children. So I ask that you allow her entrance into the accelerated math program, and I look forward to hearing from the district. My contact information is on the blue card. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. The next section on our agenda is the communications from district partners, and this evening, we don't have a PTA report to share, and Gina is away, so no report on ABC 25. So we are going to go right to our ATA report, and welcome Allison Berg. Welcome, Allison.
Thank you. I had a birthday this summer, and it seems like when I changed ages, I also need reading glasses, which I didn't bring, so I'm going to do the best I can. It's weird how it happens right on your birthday like that. Okay. So, good evening. As we get ready to start the new school year, in just less than two weeks, I decided to ask our teachers, how did you spend your summer vacation? So you can just watch some pictures behind me there in no particular order, but here is some of our teachers and how they spent their summers in their own words. Here's how many of our teachers relaxed and rejuvenated over the summer. Please enjoy the pictures from their many adventures. Courtney says that we spent three days in Costa Rica. Our vacation started in La Fortuna and ended on the Pacific side. It was a great family time before my oldest two had off to college. Allison thought it would be fun to ride my bike 100 miles from Chicago to New Buffalo, Michigan, and compete in a sprint triathlon this summer. I also spent time with my family and, of course, at the beach. Hannah says this longer summer has sure been appreciated during these busy times in our household. Summer began with teaching ESY and attending the graduation ceremony for my master's degree. I changed my name, I changed my maiden name to my married name officially, Mrs. Blanchard. Towards the end of July, I was showered with love not once but twice as we celebrated the upcoming arrival of our first child, and despite all the changes, I still found time to relax and spend time with my husband and our dog Larry. Kelly says that her first year at Olive, she had a third-grade student who went on to play Big Ten basketball and now has a show on ESPN Radio in Milwaukee. When my family was at the Wisconsin Fair last week, my son noticed an ESPN tent and looked up and who was broadcasting right then, and sure enough, it was my student from 2000. I went to say hi during, and during a commercial, he immediately popped a headset on me and brought me on the air with him. So she has a picture of that, which is a super cool, a fun thing to see. Kathy took a photo at the Mount Prospect Farmers Market. They started a new family tradition this summer, going to the market for acai bowls from Boa Acai, and they are delicious. Chris visited relatives in Norway, exploring Oslo, Trodenheim, family farms, mountains, fjords, and more. Beth says that we started the summer on an Alaskan cruise to celebrate our third and final child graduating college and me finally getting to my 50th state, and finished the summer visiting our granddaughter and son-in-law and granddaughter in Honduras. Two very different vacations. Oksana enjoyed a get-together with current and former District 25 friends at the Saddle Room in Hoffman Estates on what would have been her 30th anniversary. She says they had a lovely time remembering Jeffrey and sharing fun stories about their times in District 25. Colleen took some pictures. She had a volunteer trip to Kenya. Heather Walsh, Heather Walsh reporting in, coordinated a, if you know her, it's just like her, coordinated a 90-person Walsh family reunion at Lake Lawn Resort in Walsh, Wisconsin. She traveled to California with her kids, Lake Tahoe, Santa Monica, and Hollywood. Allison, the Keough family spent our summer in the Upper Peninsula on Lake Superior at Pictured Rocks, and then down onto the Lower Peninsula to the Thumb in Caseville on Lake Huron. Beth says, like many of the amazing teachers in the district, Beth spent her summer teaching summer U. Kids learned how, about heart rate and fitness, among other things. She walked to promote reading with the Arlington Heights Library in the Fourth of July Parade and worked with other staff as a volunteer at Frontier Days around the Fourth, or during the Fourth of July. She learned how to create equitable learning experiences for kids through her classes at Northern Illinois University, and finally, she helped her cats prepare for their synchronized sunbathing event at the Olympics. Maybe you already saw that picture. It's a pretty funny one. Jody says, for 19 years, my family and I lived on the island of Cyprus. For July, we spent it there, loving everything about it, family, friends, and of course, the beach. Also, as a bonus, my husband and I celebrated 30 years, and we went to the gorgeous island of Santorini, and yes, it's just like the photos you see, magnificent people, culture, and Greek food was to die for. Camille visited the mountains of Tennessee. Jennifer says, hi, here's a few pictures of my summer coffee shop tour with my daughter Emily. We visited a bunch of local coffee shops throughout the summer. Our favorite so far is Aroma in Crystal Lake. It was a fun way to spend time with my high school senior daughter. Laura went to Slovakia. She was rafting, there's a picture of her rafting at the Poland and Slovakia border. Amy says, which I actually, there's me. Amy says she went swimming with sharks this summer. It was, that's Amy Harder. In July, I went swimming with seven bull sharks at Jupiter, Florida. It was my Christmas present for my son and new daughter-in-law. I loved every minute of it, and I highly recommend it. If you know Amy Harder, she is a huge shark fan, so it was a real bucket list item for her. And finally, Dana swam, watched some wrestling, carted her children to basketball and acting camps, and got engaged this summer. So, as you can see, it's been a pretty memorable summer for many of our teachers, and I'm sure everyone, even those with a more low-key summer, enjoyed a chance to relax and recharge. We are ready for a new year. There's Heather Walsh right there at the star. Did we go through the whole slideshow? Is it on repeat? Okay, just making sure all, everybody's pictures have been accounted for. Thank you, have a great night. We'll see you guys in two weeks, ready to start the year.
Thanks so much. Allison, thanks for sharing those updates, and we hope all the teachers had an opportunity to rest, relax, recharge, and yes, you're right, we're looking forward to seeing everyone in just a couple of weeks. All right, our next agenda item is the consent agenda, which is an action item, so can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve those items on the consent agenda as follows. A, personnel report and addendum to personnel report. B, treasurer's reports. C, fixed asset disposal report. D, invoices. E, regular and closed session meeting minutes of July 16th, 2023.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second, please. Thank you, Anisha. And Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Nierman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scapalato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglio?
Yes.
Oliniechek?
Yes.
Thank you. Lana, and the motion carries six zero. Next, we're going to move to the Student Services portion of the agenda, and we have a very important presentation to the board and our whole community focused on updates to our district medication management procedures. As Board President, I want to say a few words before Diane Kafka from our Department of Student Services shares these crucial enhancements. Just reminding us all of the background, this spring, the school district alerted the community that there were concerns centered around a registered nurse at Westgate Elementary School and her potential misuse of prescription medication intended for specific students. We know how upsetting and disturbing this news was for everyone, especially for parents who entrust their children's medical needs to our schools every day. All of us on the board, Kevin, Brian, Rich, Gina, Liz, Anisha, and myself, are parents with kids who are or have been through our District 25 schools. As board members and as parents, we were deeply dismayed by the situation and frankly, the significant breach of trust. The safety and well-being of our students, our staff, our school community is always our highest priority. We believe our district took all the right actions at that time, immediately putting the nurse on leave, alerting the police, and the Department of Children and Family Services. After an internal investigation confirmed the concerns, an investigation that included the families in our district medication program, the board voted to terminate the nurse in question, and a police investigation still continues. And while that action addressed the immediate problem, we, and along with our district administrators, knew there was more to be done. We knew stronger oversight was needed at all levels of our school district. We needed to take further actions to begin healing the breach of trust. This brings us to the current moment. Over the summer, district administrators, nurses, and legal counsel did a thorough review of our medication management policy and procedures. This group also examined best practices from a variety of school-based and medical sources, and parents were invited to have input into the process. The results of that review will be shared tonight, after which the district will distribute this information to our full school community and post it on our website. What I want to emphasize right now is that this is truly a process and not an endpoint. With that in mind, we welcome your feedback or additional ideas, which can be shared during our public comment portions of the meeting. We will likely have a second opportunity during this meeting, or the board and Dr. K can be reached via email through boardfeedback@st25.org. So thank you to all who participated in this process, and we look forward to the thorough presentation of our next steps. Diane Kafka.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to share, you know, an overview of our medication management procedure. There you go. As with all our activities, this ties directly to our strategic plan, specifically falling under that learning environment goal, which is to cultivate a healthy climate that supports the needs of all of our learners. These procedures are designed to meet the more medical needs of our students. That's our focus tonight. The purpose of this procedure is to specify how medication is presented to school, stored at school, administered to students, documented, and disposed of. We will review the roles and responsibilities of all partners involved in these procedures. That will include their parents, guardians, registered nurses, students, and school administrators. As you shared, representatives of the District 25 nurses, administrators, and legal counsel reviewed all pertinent guidance documents to update our procedures, many listed here, many more that we reviewed too. We also requested representatives from our District 25 parent community to review our procedures to ensure clarity. As we review this information tonight, I will highlight information that we updated and new additions to our procedures. But let's start with just some general information before we get into the specific partner roles. One thing that I wanted to highlight is our health office team, and I want to thank the Board of Education for supporting an increase in our health office team staffing this year. We are currently fully staffed, as we welcomed three new team members this year. Every nurse on that list, and every nurse in our employee is a registered nurse. We have a full-time registered nurse in each of our nine school buildings, and parents can find their contact information on our website to connect with them directly. In addition to our building RNs, we also have RN support for individual student needs. These needs may vary but are specifically related to involved medical needs, such as a student with a tracheostomy or a G-tube for nutrition or cardiac care. Our three full-time certified school nurses are also registered nurses who have completed additional coursework to hold their Illinois professional educator license. Each of our CSNs provides their expertise to three buildings, but they also work together to support the entire District 25 team as a whole. We've increased our floater RN positions. We currently have three full-time team members, one that works between both of our middle schools and two that supports our elementary schools. They provide additional support on a daily basis and are flexible to float to another school to ensure that we always have health office coverage. In addition to that, we have some amazing substitute RNs, many that have been with the district for many years. They all participate in training specific to District 25 provided by our team, outlining the professional level of support that we require. This is one of our new portions of our medication management procedures, so I wanted to highlight the types of medication. Our previous procedures did not differentiate procedures for the type of medication, and as you can see, medications are very different and our procedures are now very specific in all areas, from providing the medication, storing it, administering it, documenting, and disposing it. Over-the-counter, or OTC, they're often called, medications are ones that parents can purchase without a prescription. They are used to treat symptoms such as ibuprofen for pain relief. Emergency medications require a prescription, and they are used for medical management of life-threatening events, such as insulin for a student with diabetes or albuterol for a student with asthma. These medications need to be easily accessible to be provided in a medical emergency. Controlled medications are classified by the United States Drug Enforcement Administration, and they have to meet very specific criteria. In schools, we typically have controlled medications to support students with ADHD, and those could be medications like Adderall or Focalin. Throughout this presentation, it will be apparent that we really differentiated our procedures based on the type of medication. One more general information slide relates to medication records. All medical professionals in every setting, hospitals, clinics, nursing homes, rehabilitation centers, schools, use a medication administration record, or a MAR. This is used to document the administration of medication. There are many samples available, and within your booklet that I provided to you at each of your desks, your table spaces, desks, here we are in school, you will find a sample of a MAR, and that is something that we update annually. I also put a sample up on the slideshow, too. And as you can see, these are printed, one on cardstock for durability, as they are used daily. Additional annual updates that we do include crossing out the dates that students are not in attendance, and then we also highlight every other month, just to make it easier as a visual orientation to get to the date. There is room for the identifying student information and a space on the bottom for any partners that access this to write their name and their initials, so we know who had access to this document. And during daily administration of medication, the RN would write the remaining count of the controlled substance in that top box and then initial on the bottom, so we know exactly who gave the medication. The backside allows for additional notes, allows for a space for receipt of medication, disposal, and signatures for the medication checks, which we'll be talking about soon. So let's just jump right into the roles and responsibilities of our partners. The first partner is the parent or guardian. Collaboration with a parent, nurse, physician is essential for medication management success. The first step is to share information, that a parent can share information, is on our annual registration form that is completed by a parent or guardian for every student in the district. Every year, we look through those questions and update any health information questions that we need to, and then this information feeds directly into our Power School School Information System. We did do an expanded Power School Health System update for this upcoming year, which will be much more productive in storing and accessing student health information for our nurses. If a parent needs to share a specific health concern, we have all the approved forms on our website. An example also in your booklet is the forms like from the American Lung Association for an asthma action plan, or from the Epilepsy Foundation for a seizure action plan. Those are easily accessible for parents to complete and submit to the nurses. Additionally, our District 25 initial or health history forms that we use were moved to an online Google form that the parents can submit directly to the RN or CSN. We found that much easier for parents to complete versus paper copies. As we get into that medical management, this first slide shares general outlines for all medication, and then I will move into specific ones for each medication type. The first step is the parent bringing medication into the school. You'll see that little, oops, there we go, that little new arrow, that's what's new this year, is that all medications must be submitted only to the school nurse during school hours. In the past, sometimes parents may have dropped off medication to our administrative assistants, and we want to ensure that all of our nurses have received the correct medication and it matches that authorization of medication, administration of medication form, which you also have a copy of in your binder. We need to make sure that every medication matches the forms that are completed by the parent and the physician. As we get into a little more specifics regarding over-the-counter medications, the only change that we made this year was to require any over-the-counter medication presented in a new sealed original manufacturer's package. We will not accept open packages that are half-used as our medication. We need to ensure that the medication that is being provided to us is the one that matches that form, and that anything that is used out of that would be documented on a MAR. Next are our procedures for prescription medications, emergency and controlled. Of course, we need the prescription label to include the identifying information and it must match that authorization of administration medication order form. New this year, we are going to limit medications to a 30-day supply. Typical medications are administered once a day, which would be about 30 tablets, depending on the number of school days. But there are some medications that are administered twice a day. This new 30-day supply limit will assist in accurate counts when we're doing those medication verification checks. Also new this year is that the parent or guardian must present the medication in the correct dosage. Most medication dosages are for a single tablet, but there are incidents when a prescription is written for a half-tablet. For example, a 2.5-milligram dose and the tablet is presented in a 5-milligram. What we would have is the parents need to split that tablet at home and present it to us in the format that we will be giving their child. Of course, we will have tablet splitters available in the office if a parent needs to do it there. We just want the parent to see exactly what the medication is that we will presenting to their child. Our procedures surrounding all aspects of controlled medications have changed the most. First, we are requiring that parents verify the controlled medication with the registered nurse and a witness. Along with verifying the medication that matches the physician orders, we are also requiring a description of the medication be included on that prescription bottle or on the accompanying pharmacist paperwork. And I did present you with a copy of what that looks like. And I called our Chulasco Pharmacy, it's amazing. They were able to print out one of, typically it's written for a patient. They were able to remove the patient identification and give you an idea of what that description would look like. Example, it would say it's a round, blue, scored tablet labeled with whatever numbers, like a T2 or a UR, something like that on the tablet. We need to ensure that prescription bottle has that description or that accompanying paperwork submitted by the pharmacist. A witness, as it's referenced throughout our procedures, is for many different activities. This witness can be the school administrator or it can also be a second registered nurse, which could be that CSN or one of our floater nurses that are available. And then I just put a sample up there of what that pharmacy label on the bottle would look like and also what that kind of insert that's given with every medication that the pharmacist provides. Within that pharmacy description, there are also many things about the medication itself. You know, side effects, things like that, that many families read. We really just need that descriptor part of it. And then we'll get into medication changes. This is just a slight update this year. Whenever a medication changes, we are going to require that we follow this process again. This is very important because we found that sometimes parents would bring in a refill of a medication, but it may be the generic formula now. And so, the pill might look different. It might not match the description on the bottle or that paperwork. So, we would need that paperwork again or a brand-new bottle anytime there's any kind of change. Parent requests. District 25 follows the Illinois School Student Records Act. This specifically states what needs to be included in any student records, including our health files. A parent has always had the ability to submit a written request to review or receive copies of their records. In addition to that, we added that a parent can request verification of a medication at any time. With this request, we will verify the orders, go through the medications, go through the counts, and definitely look at all the documentations on that MAR with the school nurse and also a witness. If a parent would like to administer medications to their child during the school day, we definitely want to provide an appropriate and private location to do that. New this year, we are asking that the parent notify the school nurse or the school administrator to ensure that we can have that place available any day or time that they could provide the medication to their child. Of course, with documentation procedures, if the parent is bringing that medication from home, we would not be documenting that. But if the parent needed to take one of the supply from the school supply, then we would be documenting that on the MAR with the parent's signature. We got through the parents, we're going to move on to the registered nurses. The registered nurses, as you recall, are all of our nurses. Most of these roles and these procedures are going to be fulfilled by the building nurse. But of course, a CSN, a floater RN, or a substitute nurse will follow these same procedures. As always, and as you can see on this slide, there's no updates or new arrows on this one because as always, our nurses review all student information that is presented by parents or medical providers. If needed, they can follow up with questions and then create a health plan if that's required and they will disseminate that to staff as needed. Receiving medication from the parents. Similar to the parent slide, when receiving medication, we are requiring that all medications are brought only to the school nurse to ensure that accuracy that I described previously. Per this Nurse Practice Act, an RN, a nurse can consult with the prescribing medical provider regarding clarifications on the orders that they are required to fulfill. If they need any additional information, then they would reach out to the parent to get a release of information, so they could definitely have those parameters around so the parent understands what we're talking about. Receiving over-the-counter medication, similar to the parent's side, we will only accept that sealed medication. The RN will keep the sealed medication until it's required to be administered. Once they receive it, I didn't make a sample of all of these. They put it in a little bag with the student information, with the orders in there and the medication sealed. As soon as they need to use that, they would open that up and create the medication administration record to go along with that. Any medication that's over-the-counter is stored in a locked cabinet in the health office. Receiving prescription medication. Emergency medications are very similar to the over-the-counter medications, except due to the emergent nature of the need, this healthcare bag that's created with the medication is stored in a secure, unlocked location that is easily accessible during the school day. Again, once it is used, that MAR is created. Receiving controlled substances. Our controlled substance medication, again, has the most new procedures associated with them. Upon provision, we will complete that verification with the parent, the nurse, and a witness. And I shared a sample of that in the medication book, where you can see we even put in columns for that verification checklist with that witness. The RN creates a section for each student in that booklet. And you can see I separated those by little dividers. They would identify them with the student name and make it easier for the nurse to see. But their very first page in that pocket protector would be that medication authorization form and it would also include any other information. The first sample student that's in there is the prescription page from the pharmacist. The second student has an example of either a seizure action plan or an allergy action plan. That's what would go in those pockets. If there was additional information, they would just have another clear-page pocket protector with it to store that information, so it's all in one location. The controlled medication will remain in its prescription bottle and it's stored in the health office in a locked medication box in a locked cabinet that's only accessible to the registered nurse, the certified school nurse, and the school administrator. Medication administration. All medical providers follow the six rights of medication administration. They identify that it's the right student, the right medication, the right dose, the right time, the right route, and the right documentation. As you know, our school district supports students from early childhood, little three-year-olds, all the way up through eighth grade. So, of course, the RNs are going to modify the expectation of the responses based on the age and the developmental abilities of our students. Again, they will follow the documentation that was listed previously for any medication administration on that MAR. They will also notify, the controlled substances are typically given every day. Any of the over-the-counter or the emergency medication, there will be a parental notification that those were needed that day. Medication checks. That includes, as I described earlier, verifying that the medication matches the orders, matches that description, along with the count and the documentation on the MAR. A daily med check is provided by the nurse anytime she is administering medication. What we added were two new checks. We added the weekly check, which will be a medication check, including the nurse and a witness. This will be required of all controlled medications, including reviewing all the documentation from that previous week. We also added upon request of verification from a parent, which will, again, will be the same process and include a witness for that one too. So, at any time a parent can do that and we would fulfill that request. A medication check discrepancy. So, again, this is new. Any discrepancy that is noted during our medication checks will require notification to our administrator and our certified school nurse and they will follow up with an investigation. The school administrator will follow up with the family and complete a District 25 incident report form. If any controlled substance is missing, then we will immediately notify the Arlington Heights Police Department. A medication error is defined as an incorrect dose, time, or medication. The nurse's first duty in the student health is the student's health. So, she will immediately assess that student, continue to monitor that student while calling for support from the administrator, the CSN, and notifying the parents. Of course, the team will call for emergency medical support if that is needed. And the nurse, like any other professional in the medical field, will follow the Department of Human Services medication incident reporting instructions. And again, if that needs to be done, they notify me. We fill in the parents and we have a chain of command with that incident report. These are unexpected situations. These happen very rarely, but we did want to include them in our procedures. With these, there's three main ones that we included. Medication refusal, medication regurgitation, and medication waste. The RN would contact the school administrator and the CSN to provide support during any student refusal or witness to the medication waste. These extra support personnel during that time can review the situation to provide strategies to decrease the likelihood of a repetition. For example, if there's a medication waste of dropping the medication on the floor, the administrator might review how it is being presented and maybe make a recommendation to have the student seated or not near the sink if it was falling in the drain, little things like that, just to have that extra pair of eyes to say, what happened and how can we make those corrections? Of course, if we see continued medication waste, that would be something we would want to investigate, do another medication verification check of all the controlled substance medications. And then, of course, the parents would be notified of any of these unexpected situations. Medication disposal. We refute our disposal procedures that were implemented that we used at the end of this previous school year and also our summer programming. Based on that review, we made an update. And this was really where we found a differentiation from the controlled medications and the over-the-counter or the emergency medications. Previously, all medication had to be picked up from the nurse by the parent, signed by a witness. We still require that procedure for our controlled medications, but now we are going to allow a parent to delegate the responsibility of picking up that over-the-counter, the emergency medication to another adult. So, if a grandma or an aunt or a family friend is picking up that child on the last day of school and the parent gives us written notification that they can come and pick up their over-the-counter medication, we will allow that. We found that we did have quite a bit of waste, especially of the over-the-counter medications. And we do want to avoid that. We want to recognize that for families. So, we will allow that moving forward. If we still have medication left, we follow all of the Food and Drug Administration Safe Disposal Guidance, which we work closely with the Arlington Heights Police Department to accomplish this. Field trips. We have always followed these guidelines for medication on field trips. The only little new procedure is that if we are sending controlled medication on a field trip, we typically had it in a bag, now we are going to have it in a locked bag. You can think of something similar to like a little bank bag that has a key and a lock. We will be purchasing those so that our nurses have access to those to send controlled medication on a field trip. And then the other little update that we added is that anytime medication comes back, we will again do one of those medication checks with all the returning medication and documentation. The safety of our health offices is important to maintain that confidentiality and to support the health of our students and staff. We determined that we really need to limit access only when medically necessary for our staff themselves or to accompany a student to garner, you know, emergency medications or supplies or confidentially discuss student health concerns. We also increased some of the health supplies in the nurse's office so that they don't have to leave as frequently. For example, we're getting little ice machines and a little microwave so that our nurses can make their hot and cold packs without having to go to the lounge to make those. So, we're going to be having those right there, easy access for them. One of the things that was new, the new highlight on the bottom, is that many of our school offices have two access doors. One to the main office and then one to either the hallway or the commons. So, what we are going to be doing is if a nurse needs to leave the health office, for example, to go out to the playground, recess, to assess a student, they are going to be locking that outside door, that hallway or that commons door. They can put a little sign on that says, "Go around to the office." And then our administrative assistants will be there to greet the student or the staff member and see what they need. Again, they could help with a minor health need, get a Band-Aid, something like that. But again, they'd be accompanied into the health office to meet that need. If it was more than that, our administrative assistant would be calling our school administrators and our nurse to get that support. We just want to make sure no one is unattended in the health office. And then we get to the student. The student's role in medication at school. Again, as I shared, there's the six rights of medication administration and this is exactly how the students will fulfill their role. One of our nurse's responsibilities in a school is to provide education. So, she will help the student learn how to advocate for themselves during taking medication and support them to answer these questions. Same questions as I reviewed before. And then we're moving on to our last partner that we're discussing this evening and that's our school administrator. As a school administrator, they are responsible for the supervision and the implementation of all of these medication management procedures. All of our school administrators have already reviewed this information and I will personally follow up with all of them and our District 25 nurses. There are a few new requirements for our school administrator. Mostly, it's acting as that witness for the medication provision, the waste incidence, and the disposal. But they will also investigate medication discrepancies and most importantly, support our nurses who support the children. So, thank you for allowing me to share. Again, it's the highlights of our new medication management procedure. We will include the very detailed procedures on the website ensuring easy access for families. And as you shared, the procedures will constantly be reviewed and revised based on feedback from our partners, the parents, the nurses, the students, and the administrators.
Thank you so much, Diane. And for the detail you've walked us through and shared with us and particularly in the presentation highlighting what is new and different as we move forward. So, I know you, we had some questions from the board and thank you for supplying those answers. So, I have some further questions, but I want to turn to my colleagues first. Anyone have questions for Diane?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
Diane, thank you for the presentation and for the detailed visual aids. This is very helpful. I see that there's a lot of handwritten documentation involved in this process. Can you just explain briefly what sort of digital documentation takes place in any of these situations and how it differs from the handwritten documentation and also how it might complement or match it?
Yeah, and our team did review that MAR in conjunction with our Power School. Our Power School is really used for any documentation of assessing a student. You know, they go through that every office visit when they're assessing a student's health is documented in Power School. Anything that's with the medication administration, we felt that document was better to be able to document how many, the counts, the notes, any verification on that. If there's anything out of the ordinary in regards to medication administration, they can write that in Power School as an additional note. So, if a student had a refusal for medication because they had a headache, they would document it on the MAR and then also supplement that with the student assessment portion in Power School.
Other questions? Diane, I wanted to ask, and apologies if you said this during, but you said the MAR was updated. What was, could you just remind me again, what was? What was, could you just remind me again, what was new or different with, related to the MAR?
Yes, yeah, so even last year, we moved to having it on card stock and crossing out all the dates so that it was easier for each nurse. Previously, we used a template. You can Google and find them online, see lots of templates to just have the month and the days. So we went through, printed it on card stock, Xed out or crossed out all the dates that are not student attendance, did some highlighting changes, and then also based on our new procedures of having witnesses, we updated the, the backside.
Yeah, I'm gonna have Adam. Adam, can you put up page 10?
Oh, I can do that, sorry.
Oh, good, thank you.
I have control.
It's on page 10.
There. The backside, which we also added some columns for the witness. Most Mars don't have anything like that, so we updated that to have that and three columns for initial if we were doing those medication checks, anything like that that we needed. We updated to more meet our needs. And our nurses, I'm referencing over there to my nurse team, they used it and they provide the feedback every year on what we need to update and what we need to change. And so respecting that, we have made some, some changes to that.
So it's really customized to fit what this plan is asking our staff to do?
Yes.
Okay, great. So could you tell us about, in, in relation to two groups? So how does, what does the rollout look like? So for families, right, what, how and when do they find out about these new procedures? We're just a couple of weeks away. And then staff, I know many of the staff were involved in the process, of course, but could you talk about those two groups and?
Absolutely. So families, tonight is the first night. Some families got to review it as, as part of the procedures, but wanted to share it with you first, answer any questions, make sure that we're at least clear to start the year. So that's the next step, is to roll this out with families. Fortunately, our Authorization for Medication Form was updated in the spring, that, that happened before that, knowing we wanted to roll that out this year. So they have access to that online, but any of these new procedures regarding the, the 30-day supply, bringing it in the tablets, we need to share that information with families next. So after this evening, we'll make some communication and be able to share that with them. With our school staff, with our school administrators, I did review this procedure with them when we met earlier this week or last week and kind of reviewed it, had them review the document, knowing that we were going to meet tonight and if there were any other changes, I'll definitely review it with them. And then our school nurses, I've offered them to come in before school starts. So we have a meeting set for next week on Tuesday to meet together as a group and we are including our substitute nurses to come into that too, to be able to review all of these procedures. And they've had access to the ongoing documents to review it, but it was really the core team that designed it.
Great. And so a parent out in the community, maybe after Tuesday, is there, they learn about this, they have questions, who's their first point of contact? Is it the school nurse or what would you suggest?
Yes, I would suggest the school nurse. So that school nurse page is updated on our website because we did have a couple of changes in our, in our school nurse staffing. And so their contact information is included right on there, all their emails are active. All of our nurses do have a little bit of time before school starts for them on the 26th to come in and get their offices set up and if they need to review any emails or make an appointment with a family, they can definitely do that.
Great, thank you. Any, just checking one more time?
Yeah, I just have more so comment. Thank you so much for your comprehensive presentation today and, you know, student health and safety is pivotal and so thanks for your continued vigilance, for your whole team, the whole district, so much work. And I want to acknowledge the nurses who have attended here today in support of continued safety and the importance we place on this, so thank you for being here.
Well, thank you again, Diane, and again, we both acknowledge this is a process and so thank you for everyone's work bringing us to this point. Okay, we now go into the business and finance portion of this evening's agenda and so we have an action item for crossing guard locations. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the crossing guard locations as presented for the 2024-25 school year.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second, please.
Second?
Thank you, Anisha. So we turn to Stacy, if you could please share the information regarding the crossing guard locations.
So my office meets annually with the representatives from the Village of Arlington Heights, both the individual in charge of the traffic throughout the village as well as our school resource officers to review our crossing guard locations and make the determination if there are any decisions to be made based on the safety points awarded to each location, knowing that we have, for the last couple of years, not been able to find anyone to apply to fill these positions. So at this point, we're not recommending any additional locations and we continue to have the vacant locations that I've indicated in the agenda item as well as the locations that will be in existence at this point for this year that we do have staffing for. We can have the positions posted and will review any applicants that apply to try to maintain the level of locations that we currently have. And the Village of Arlington Heights, for the board's reminding is, the Village of Arlington Heights does, while we oversee the crossing guard, hiring of the employees, the Village of Arlington Heights does take on the financial costs for that and reimburse the district for those services.
All right, thank you, Stacy. Any questions from the board? Stacy, I just have a quick question. The positions are listed as, you know, an AM and PM shift. Could someone say, I'm available for the PM at that location? Can, is that possible?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Those, those are, just to clarify, those are the times that we have a guard at those locations?
Oh, okay.
It may not always be the same person, typically I think it is, but we do have some locations where someone will do exactly what you said and say, I can work in the morning, but I can't do the afternoons.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so no other questions? So Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Joggi?
Yes.
Scott Palato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Nieman?
Thank you, Lana, the motion carries 6-0. And the next agenda item is also an action item, this is for the serious safety hazards, so can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the resolution to continue serious safety hazardous busing for the 2024-25 school year.
Thank you, Kevin, and a second, please.
A second.
Thank you, Anisha, and so Stacy, again.
Yes, thank you. Under the school code, the district, in accordance with the school code, the district provides busing at no cost to students who live over the mile and a half distance identified in the law or in a serious, who would have to walk through a serious safety hazard location to get to school. In order to establish those serious safety hazard locations that qualify for that, this resolution is needed. We have no changes that we're recommending for the locations currently in existed for the, in existence for the upcoming year.
All right, thank you, Stacy. Any questions again from the board? All right, seeing none, Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Scott Palato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Nieman?
Yes.
Joggi?
Yes.
Thank you, Lana, and the motion carries 6-0. And the final item in this area of the budget, we're gonna have the presentation of the 2024-25 tentative budget and this is an information item. So Stacy, we'll turn to you again.
Thank you. Wait for it to come up on screen. All right, thank you. So here tonight, I have a summary presentation of the 2024-25 tentative budget. You have a copy of the legal state budget document in board docs and both this presentation and the legal budget would be posted to our district website tomorrow for reviewing for the public in anticipation of the public hearing. In terms of the assumptions related to this budget, as you can see them here on the screen, CPI is established in January each year for the upcoming tax levy, so the CPI for the 23 tax levy is 5%. That tax levy is collected in two installments in the spring and then again in the fall of 2024, thus it's included in this budget, and then 3.4% for 2024, which will affect the spring collection in 2025. It also reflects the abatement of the $1.9 million debt service levy that we issued with the 2023 tax levy. We project based on experience, a 99% collection rate with our property taxes. As always, I do do some reallocation between funds based on need and this budget does reflect anticipation of a $370,000 TIF surplus distribution from the Village of Arlington Heights. Note, we had anticipated that this year, but I kept asking the village where it was and that information was sent to Cook County in May, so therefore didn't hit this year's budget, but will hit next year's budget, possibly two distributions because they anticipate this district, this surplus distribution will be every year now until the TIF expires, but I didn't budget for it, just seeing what happened this year. Interest income, I'm anticipating a 3% return on investment as the Fed is projecting some decrease in the interest rates in the next 12 months. CPPRT, we're hoping that those estimates get released any day now from the Illinois Department of Revenue, but they have given us every indication that those amounts will decrease going into this upcoming year. State funds, we're about $100,000 more in our evidence-based funding state formula than we were this past year and we, the budget reflects an increase in our transportation funds, state reimbursement, because those are a calculation based on our prior year costs. So as our costs go up, we do anticipate seeing some higher levels of reimbursement unless, of course, the state prorates it and then makes it back to a flat amount. And then in terms of federal funds, we do anticipate an increase in our national school lunch reimbursement mainly based on their rates and our participation. And then this budget does reflect one last payment from SRR3 as that American Rescue Plan related to the pandemic did expire at the end of June, but we had claims through the end of June that we submitted that will get reimbursed in this budget year. So this chart, oh, I got ahead of myself. This chart shows you across funds, both the current year budget and our unaudited actual, where we're standing at this point, and the difference from this year's budget. So you can see we were real close in terms of the current year budget and then the upcoming budget for 2024-25. You will see the, the main increase here in total is due to the anticipation included in this budget of the sale of the $15 million referendum bonds that are remaining from the referendum. Interest income affects all funds here. The O and M fund is the fund affected by the CPPRT, thus the larger decrease. The bond and interest differential from last year to this year and a portion of it, that's that $1.9 million abatement, so a portion of it hit the spring collection, a portion of it will hit the fall collection. And again, I do pro- reallocate taxes across funds. It's not an equal increase across every fund every year, so therefore that explains some of the differentials in the revenue by fund. This is a slightly different look, in total the same amount, but this will go by category. In terms of the increases, again, the property taxes decreased net mainly because of that adjustment for the abatement. CPPRT, you see the significant decrease, the interest, again, it's a lower interest rate, but remember we also had $60 million of bond proceeds that we've been earning interest on over the course of the last 18 months or so. As that amount dwindles, we're not earning interest on it, so that's a significant also impact on the interest income in this case. The textbooks, we did adjust our student fees going into this year as well as added the increase fee for the full day kindergarten program. The tuition is our summer school tuition and our children's circle tuition for the early childhood program, so there was an increase in that rate as well. Our rental agreements are the lease agreements we have for our RAND school and our minor school and those contracts have automatic inflationary adjustments built in and then I already spoke about the state and federal changes. And then this is a summary of the, again, more specific categories of funding in terms of changes between last year's budget and this year's budget. So again, you see the change in the taxes. Thank you, pretty much see, I do show here the bond proceeds at the biggest increase on here, but all of the things I've detailed already are shown very specifically in this And then as always, just as kind of a picture of our revenue budget, property taxes in the northwest suburbs and definitely here represent the largest portion of our revenue In terms of our expenditures, one thing to note, this budget does include the cost for all of the approved FTE for full day kindergarten. As of the time I created the budget, we do have six positions that we haven't filled. I guess we'd say they're on hold, but I wanted to make sure we held them in the budget so that budget to budget wise, we know they're there until we get to a point where they're either all full, which we would anticipate, or if for some reason we didn't need to fill them because they are part of the personnel plan at this point. Salaries, as always, are based either on our negotiated agreements or they're tied to CPI. As always, our health insurance costs, the board has capped at a 6% increase every year. This budget includes two major one-time costs, I guess I'll call them, in terms of the curriculum adoption that was approved in the spring for, or last year for 1.6 million as well as the furniture replacement plan for 1.6 million. It also includes the 7% increase in the bus transportation contract as well as we saw a significant increase in our special ed transportation of about $300,000 this year, which I would expect to continue. Included in the budget are the balance of our current open contracts for our building additions as well as the remaining payouts still due on 2024 capital projects as well as some early costs for next summer's capital projects as we may start spending those dollars as soon as school gets out and we can start processing projects. The budget continues to reflect a transfer from the operations and maintenance fund to capital projects as well as from the working cash to capital projects to continue to save for future capital needs in accordance with previous conversations that we've had with the board. And we continue as always to have contingency funds in the budget for certified staff and non-certified staff as well as special education tuition students in the case that we need those dollars, in the case that they're not needed in the budget, they just don't get spent and remain in reserves. Similar to the revenue, this chart shows you the current year budget, or I guess last year budget at this point, unaudited actual by fund as well as the proposed budget for next year. So in this case, the overall budget is a decrease, that's because we had a significant amount of capital projects, mainly the decreases in that fund. We had 46 million budgeted last year, the significant amount of work that got done and the, the difference of 19 million at this point, that's remaining from those contracts as they're still working. at this point, that's remaining from those contracts, as they're still working. Excluding construction, the budget increase is about 9.5 million, which is a 10% increase over last year. And just a reminder, as you saw on the previous slide, at least 3.2 million of this is from those two one-time costs, the literacy adoption and the furniture plan. So taking those out, the increase is about 6.7% overall, 6.3 million, and that is mainly due to all of the additional personnel that were added and included in this budget for the full-day kindergarten program, as well as those transportation costs that I Again, just a different way to look at it. This is kind of by type of cost. Salary and employee benefits typically tied together, as employee benefits also, it's a 6% for the insurance costs, as well as the pension costs that are tied to the salaries. And then the supplies, that's mainly the, a lot of the furniture, as well as the curriculum adoption. And then the large decrease being in the construction contracts. And then again, similarly, this just breaks it down exactly what I just said, with a little bit more detail in terms of what the differentials are. Yeah?
Quick question. A 1.6 for literacy and 1.6 for curriculum. Is that the multi-year amount?
Yes.
All in this year? Because that's how we spent it, or is that a one-year allocation?
Correct. No, that 1.6 million curriculum adoption is for a...
What is it?
Five or six, six years, I believe.
Okay. Okay. That's what I thought. Yep.
Correct. Correct. And then the furniture, we decided it was, in the long term, it was cheaper to just get it all at once than to do overtime and incur those additional costs for future. Correct. And then in terms of breakdown on the budget, I did take out debt and construction, because those are so different every year and really skew the total dollars. So without those two built in here, you can see the majority of our costs, 78%, which is pretty consistent year over year, are for personnel. In terms of our fund balance, again, you can see where we are unaudited fund balance at this point for this year. Just as a refresher, we had budgeted, I keep saying this year, last year, we had budgeted a $28.6 million overall deficit for 23, '24, 100% due to the spending of the bond proceeds on all the capital projects. I'm sorry. We had budgeted a $36 million deficit, and we ended up with a $28.6 million deficit for '23, '24, which is a net $7.4 million to the good, less of a deficit. Of that amount, 5.2 million is carryforward of some of the capital projects we anticipated paying out before June 30th that haven't gotten paid out yet. So even without that, we ended up about $2.2 million better than we anticipated for last year. And that is mainly due to those unspent contingency funds I've referenced, we include in the budget, as well as honestly having just some unfilled positions that we weren't able to get filled during the year. So as always, the budget is going to be conservative. Make sure we have enough funds in the budget to cover any anticipated costs that we incur, but we don't spend those contingency dollars unless their student moves in and needs a one-to-one TA, or we have to open another section of a grade level and add a teacher. But other than that, we don't spend those dollars, and they just remain, and they don't get spent, they remain in fund balance. Terms of our timeline, this just kind of walks you through. We had a number of conversations about personnel over the course of the year. We'll continue making some final changes, as we're still in the process of filling positions. And I do like to get that salary budget as tight as possible with actual staff, so I will continue making those changes for the September meeting prior to the public hearing and final budget adoption.
Thank you, Stacy. So we will see an action item at the next...
Correct.
...text board meeting. So any questions from the board? Oh, Brian, can you turn off your... Oh, oh, you had a... Sorry.
Stacy, thanks, as always. The 370 and the TIF, 370K, so that was unanticipated. And you said that, I think I heard you right, that's unanticipated going forward, right? That surplus.
Could you clarify?
The 370 for that TIF surplus, that was unanticipated, and it's an extra unanticipated going forward.
Right. I mean, at this point, we're anticipating getting it, but it wasn't revenue that, other than the Village told us it should be coming, it wasn't revenue that would be within our control.
So being that was unanticipated, do we have a direct potential need for it? So as a suggestion, or as a thought might be, since it was unanticipated, do we steer that to pay down the debt, accelerate to pay down the debt, or do something else, either accelerate into our capital fund or doing something so that we earmark that, if we know it's coming, earmark that revenue as either pay down debt or something into capital?
So that's exactly where I put it, is into the capital fund. Any anticipated revenue at this point, that would be my plan.
Okay. And how it relates to that capital fund, then, you know, because one of our goals was that by the time we get done with all this, we'll have enough for the annual upkeep going forward. So how is that capital fund availability, or at least looking, so that when we're done with all this build-out, we have the money to keep maintaining it going forward and not go back to the taxpayers?
So at this point, I mean, we are building it for the future. I do have it, and I will bring a five-year forecast to the board this fall. But I do have it even out beyond that timeline. I, off the top of my head, to 20, '30, '31, maybe. So we're like seven years out, with still having a fund balance in that fund. You know, again, it gets difficult to really project out that far, because we move capital projects back and forth and in and out. And we did a lot of work in 1997 on a lot of buildings, which is kind of why it all, a lot of it hit us in this same window. So that being, I would anticipate that, you know, 20 years from now, or 25 years from now, you know, if we replace $10 million in roofs, unless we choose to do it earlier, that kind of thing is still going to hit in chunks in the future. But outside of that, I believe we are saving enough money to get us on an annual basis to be able to cover those costs.
All right. Thank you, Rich. Any other questions?
Sorry. I apologize in advance. I don't even know what slide number this is. So the fund balance slide.
Yep.
Is the 2 million transfer out in operations and maintenance a shift for the construction/ capital improvements? I'm just curious why it's even a number.
Yes. It's just because that's a number that I just choose it for the, for '23, '24. We did 3.5 million. At this point, for next year, I'm just showing it as 2 million, and you can see it's the, I tried to highlight where they match up fund to fund.
Right.
At this point, it's, it's just a number I pick, because I kind of watch the fund balances, where they grow, where they don't grow, and make those decisions on an annual basis.
Okay. Yep. That makes sense.
Mr. President?
Can you turn off here?
No.
Yes, Kevin.
Stacy, on slide seven, you mentioned, excuse me, you mentioned six full-day kindergarten positions that you referred to on hold. For those positions, when you say on hold, does that mean they are posted vacancies yet to be filled, or does that mean that they are pending enrollment?
They are pending enrollment.
Okay. Unless there's any further questions, thank you again, Stacy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to go to the Personnel and Planning section of the agenda. We have an action item for the guest teacher pay rate proposal. So can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the guest teacher pay rate proposal as presented.
Thank you. And a second, please.
A second.
Thank you, Anisha. And so we welcome Kendra Perry to the board table. And so if you could walk us through the information, please.
Absolutely. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to recommend an increase in rates for a valuable group of employees, our guest teachers, also known as substitute teachers. This group of employees is an extremely valuable asset, and one that we want to continue finding ways to attract and then retain to support staff absences throughout the entire school year. The work of a guest teacher is challenging and rewarding. Our dedicated guest teachers continue to come back and serve our community year after year because of the great connection they've made with our building staff. My recommendation tonight is to increase the daily rate for subs that are in certified assignments that serve from building to building each week, filling the needs throughout the district each and every day, and incentivize those who sub in random assignments and to keep subbing. My recommendation is to make the daily rate for guest teachers $140 per day for days 1 through 20. Starting on day 21, subs would level up and begin earning $150 for days 21 through 40. To continue providing incentives for subs to work more days, I am recommending another level up, starting on day 41, earning $160 per day to sub in random assignments. The final level up, starting on day 61, I am recommending we pay our guest teachers $170 per day. I believe this change will encourage and hopefully provide an incentive for our current subs to continue taking assignments throughout the year. To keep them coming back the next year, if our subs work 60-plus days making it to Level 4, we will start them the following year at Level 4. If they work another 60-plus days, they can keep the Level 4 the following year. I hope this will show our commitment to the subs who dedicate their time to filling assignments in Arlington Heights School District 25. There is one more incentive that I want to point out, and that is retired teachers collecting a pension will start at Level 2 or $150 per day. Tonight, I am asking that the Board of Education take action on the recommended update to the guest teacher rate increase. The service of this group provides, is, the services group provides is critical to our success, allowing us to continue operating smoothly each and every day in educating our children. At this time, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the recommended changes and updates as written for the guest teacher rate increase. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Kendra. Yes. Any questions for the board on this proposal? Okay. Seeing none, thank you again. And Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Yes.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scapalato?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Lana. The motion carries 6-0, and we're going to stay in this area. And the next agenda item is also an action item to approve our handbooks. So can I have a motion, please?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the following staff handbooks for the 2024, 2025 school year as submitted. Educational Support Personnel Handbook, Food and Nutrition Services Handbook, Guest Teacher Handbook, Other Support Personnel Handbook, Teaching Assistant, Clerical Assistant, and Registered Nurse Handbook.
Thank you, Kevin. And a second, please. Thank you, Rich. And so back to you again, Kendra, if you could take us through these, through the handbooks.
Okay. So annually, the Personnel and Planning Department updates the following employee handbooks. Educational Support Personnel, we call ESP, Teaching Assistant, Clerical Assistant, and Registered Nurse, TEKARN Handbook, the Food and Nutrition Services Handbook, and the Guest Teacher/Substitute Handbook. A new handbook this year is for Other Support Personnel, called OSP. The purpose of updating these employee handbooks is to ensure the district continues to attract, develop, and retain diverse, high-quality, innovative employees. In addition, we seek to cultivate a healthy climate and culture that creates conditions and supports the needs of all learners. The content of the employee handbook addresses items that impact employee health, safety, and culture. The following recommended changes were made to the following three handbooks: the ESP, Educational Support Handbook, TEKARN, Teaching Assistant, Clerical Assistant, and Registered Nurse, and the Food and Nutrition Services Handbook. First, we updated all of the compensation charts. Next, we clarified language in two areas. Under the vacation use, we addressed specific areas where a salary proration may need to be applied. And under sick leave, to mirror the language in Section 13 of the ATA contract, and to address specific areas where a salary proration may apply. Additionally, the complaint managers were reassigned to Kendra Perry and Chris Fano. In addition to the previously noted changes to the handbooks, I would also like to highlight a recommendation, a recommended update to the Guest Teacher Handbook. The current guidance for retired teachers has been updated to 120 days or 600-hour limit. That is in effect through June 30th of 2026. Finally, I'm pleased to share a new handbook for our Other Support Personnel OSP. The addition of this new handbook is to establish guidance for employees who are managers but not administrators. It also contains specific specialties whose positions are not specific to a school setting and have counterparts in the private sector. This handbook was modeled off of the ESP handbook. The same edits as noted in the ESP handbook were added to this handbook. Compensation per position is unique and regionally competitive, based on the specific skill set these valuable, valuable employees bring to the district. Existing evaluation tools were linked for these specific and unique positions. The following employees are covered under the guidance of this new handbook. Non-12-month employees include the Assistant Director for Food and Nutrition Services, Board Certified Behavior Analyst, Analyst, Sign Language Interpreter, Building Support Technician, Technology Facilitator Non-Certified. And the 12-month employees include the Benefits Manager, Facilities Supervisor, Payroll Manager, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, the Head of Communications and Storytelling, Data and Systems Specialist, and Support Technician. Tonight, I am asking that the Board of Education take action on the recommended updates to the ESP, TEKARN, Food Services, and Guest Teacher Handbooks, in addition to the adoption of the OSP Handbook. I sincerely appreciate the efforts and the exceptional service that all of these employee groups provide our students. Their service is critical to our success, allowing us to continue operating smoothly each and every day in educating our children. At this time, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the recommended changes and updates as written.
Thank you, Kendra, and thank you for walking through the changes and updates and the new handbook. So any questions from the board on those? Okay. Seeing none, Lana, if you could please call the vote.
Serniglia?
Yes.
Olenichak?
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scapalato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Lana. And so the motion carries 6-0. And thank you again, Kendra. All right. We go into the Superintendent's Report section of the agenda, and the first item is our Freedom of Information Act report. So Dr. K, if you could review those FOIA items with us.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, I have three topics. And as you mentioned, the first one is the Freedom of Information Act report. Since the last board meeting, we've had one request that has been responded to under the guidelines.
Okay. Thank you. And the next item under the Superintendent's Report is our first reading of policies. And these are coming to us from, what was the...
Press 115.
This is from Press 115. So Dr. K, if you could take us through the first reading.
Absolutely. The second topic I have this evening is the first reading of policies. We discussed 18 policies and four exhibits at our last Policy Committee meeting. I want to draw your attention to the document titled Overview, Press 115, First Reading, Number 240813. It looks like this one. This has all the notes that I will mention. Two exhibits were recommended by a majority of the committee, which means they were not unanimously moved on. They were 2:70 and 2:160. Those are two exhibits. The discussion around these two caused them not to get unanimous approval. There was a desire to remove references to the Illinois Association of School Boards, but as written, the exhibits did get majority approval to move forward. So those were the... So those were the first two that stood out from the others. Since the Policy Committee met, an additional handbook has been added to the handbook list as Kendra just talked about. The OSP or Other Support Personnel Staff Handbook is now included, but was absent during the Policy Committee meeting, and this impacts five policies overall. Lastly, the Policy Committee asked for two more information items for two of the policies. The first one is 4:15 titled Identity Protection. The question's related to whether or not we should add more security and protection than what is currently listed in the policy. The response from our board's attorney was, we could ask, bless you, we could ask the company we use to store this information online, and specifically, I'm talking about the social security number. We use a organization called Skyward to house this information. So we could ask them to block the social security number from being visible to anyone other than the critical staff who need it to secure this information further. The two departments needing this information are the Business and Personnel and Planning Department for a variety of reasons: 403B, IMRF, taxes, workman's comp claims, W-2 forms, I-9 forms. So that was the first policy that needed some additional information before we considered, do we want to make any changes to it? And then the second policy that needed more information was 7:170 on vandalism. The questions around that policy were whether or not we can add language indicating that while there may not be vandalism in some situations causing harm to property, could we seek damages or recoup costs for the time involved in investigating those incidents? So after checking with the board's attorney, they stated that we could add language to the policy indicating that additional costs could also be subject to recoupment. However, if we were going to ask parents or guardians for payments for items that were not damaged, we may have to file a civil lawsuit to take them to court, which would most likely incur more costs, not making the survival option to consider according to our board's attorney. So those were the two last policies that did require additional information out of the Policy Committee. Do we have any questions? And again, this was just first reading of Press 115.
Any questions from the board? So for, to come back for second reading, we want to give Dr. K some direction. So in particular, the two you highlighted for us. So let's start with that 7:170. Would the board be okay with the policy as presented, so without any change?
Yeah, there were two, and Greg mentioned the first one, 7:170 vandalism.
Vandalism. I started with that one, sorry.
It's actually the last one on our list, but the first one was mentioned.
So I just, I want to see the will of the board, are we okay moving forward as written? Okay, all right, and?
And then the other one was 4:15, Identity Protection.
And so in my read, in hearing your response, Dr. K, is that is an operational, not necessarily a change in the policy, so?
Correct. If I could just add, yes, that is true. The attorney said we could operationalize some changes through Skyward, but they didn't recommend any policy language change.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So the question of the board is, are we okay with as presented with the notes as you shared, Dr. K?
Mr. President, just a clarifying question.
Yeah, please, go ahead, Rich.
In the write-up, you mentioned that the two departments that need the information, are they the only two departments that have access to the information? As a two different, you know, two different words, yeah.
Yes. All of the people within those departments currently would have access, and we could further refine that in Skyward. So all of Business, all of Personnel currently could see it, the social security number.
Right, right.
So we could ask Skyward to limit it to just specific users.
Right, right, but what I maybe is a very broad example, does the janitorial staff have access to the social security number? That's what I'm getting. Those are the only two departments that have access to it?
So Brian's correct, and not even everyone in the business office has it. Like, the transportation person doesn't have that. So it's only people for the reasons that were listed that Brian described, people who handle workers' comp benefits payroll in my office have access to it, and then the HR department.
So really, those only members of those two departments, select members of the two departments?
Correct, can see that data.
Thank you, Rich, for that clarification. All right, so I think, Dr. K, we're good to move these all forward as presented for a second reading?
For a second reading, great.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so thank you, board, for clarifying those, so we can move forward, and we'll now go to our Superintendent Transition Plan. So, Dr. K?
All right. My third and final piece tonight is regarding the transition plan. I pulled out the high-level slides just to highlight some pieces of the transition plan. So on page two is a letter that is directed to you, the Board of Education, stating my priorities, primarily in engaging deep and meaningful conversations with you, staff, students, parents, community members. Today, I feel blessed to be given the opportunity to lead in District 25, and today, District 25 is recognized as a high-performing district for its commitment to personalized learning, quality educators, financial stewardship, and of course, beautiful facilities. This page, as you would all recognize, is our visual collective agreement for our strategic plan. It has vision, the values, the goals, and the strategies. Together today to transform tomorrow is the slogan that unites our district around a fiscally responsible strategic plan to enhance students' learning and ensure consistent outcomes for all students who enter our doors. Through listening to staff, students, parents, and community, together, we will continue to, on the successful journey to take our school and all of our entire district to the next level to reach our vision of empowering an inclusive, diverse community of learners to innovate and thrive as global citizens. This slide shows the timeline I expect to work through for the collaboration and the efforts of communication. I've been engaging with community partners and district office staff and building-level administrators, anxiously awaiting the arrival of educators and support staff before the arrival of students on August 29th. When everyone arrives this fall, I'm excited to arrange listening opportunities with staff, students, and community members. This page shows that our vision is propelled forward when our community works as one, harnessing the unwavering commitment for our staff, cultivating connections with our parents, and inviting our community of partners, our partnerships with our local schools actively, and focusing all energies on enhancing student learning. The questions that I anticipate asking the parents, the staff, and the students will revolve around, what is it we are currently doing well? What are some areas of growth? What do you see happening in other school districts that you feel like we should add to ours? I'm interested in knowing how we will ensure challenging and innovative learning experiences that are consistent and get the best outcomes that are consistent for all of the kids who enter our doors. I'm interested in knowing how we will support our staff in reaching our vision and the strategic goals, and I'm interested in knowing how we will best achieve our mission while demonstrating fiscal responsibility. As the Superintendent, I plan to facilitate and lead our community by understanding others' perspectives, building upon our strengths, and bridging areas that need focused attention. I look forward to working alongside our staff, students, and community to ensure every child benefits from exemplary education. The transition plan overall is intended to be dynamic, clear, and transparent in communicating my commitment to connecting with the Arlington Heights community to build relationships and prioritize the strategic plan goals. The findings in the transition plan will inform decisions, help shape the next strategic plan, and build a strong foundation from which to lead. I look forward to collaborating with all of you, and I'm excited for all that is to come for District 25. District 25 continues to attract families because of the outstanding education and engaged community that students receive in our school district. I appreciate your support in allowing this to happen in support of our students, our staff, our parents, and our community. Together today, we will transform tomorrow. So this is just a high level of the anticipated plan of really getting out and listening to all of our constituents, students, staff, parents, and I would anticipate, near the end of the year, coming back to share all that I have learned from these groups. So thank you for allowing me to share a high-level view of this plan. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. K. Do you have questions for the board? Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a comment. I wanted to thank you, Dr. K. You know, truly, your leadership curiosity shows through in the questions that you're going to be asking the community and that you're already asking the community with all the informational copies that you're having one-on-one with representatives throughout the community already. So we really appreciate this. I'll speak for myself, I really appreciate the outreach and the openness that you've already established in your very short time as Superintendent of our district. So thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. K, I want to add, yeah, my gratitude as well, just for the transparency and bringing us along, bringing the board along on this journey as you, you know, into this role and lead our district. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if there's any, no other comments or questions?
I have one more, but I see she left the room, and that was Kendra's son turns 21 today, and I offered to let her not come to the meeting, and I would take her topics, and she said it was her first opportunity to talk to you as a board, and she also said her 21-year-old son probably didn't want to hang with her tonight. But I just want to say happy birthday to her son. And thanks, Kendra, for being here.
Yes, thank you, and happy birthday. All right, well, we are, we've arrived at our second community input section of the agenda. So if any community member wishes to address an agenda item on the agenda, please complete one of the blue forms provided and hand it to Lana O'Brien. Lana, do we have any for the second one? Seeing none, we will go right to our future agenda items. And first, I'll ask, we have some things to discuss, but any new topics that have been brought to Dr. K that we need to discuss tonight? Okay, and so Dr. K and I have been talking about the two that are on there, and we're talking about how these will come forward to the board, but in the discussion, we wanted to come back to all of you to, just to check in, we can keep the item, but get a little more clarity on the e-learning review, just so that Dr. K has direction for the staff and how to make that meaningful when it does come to the board. I look back, it was added in February, or it was in the minutes for February, but I could not find on the video a discussion, so, and I didn't want to rely simply on my memory. So board members, if you could hearken back, it came at a time, we had used the e-learning plan, and I know there were some questions from the board. It could be just a simple review of the plan, which is what Dr. K and I talked about, but was there anything else that you would like to add to the discussion or the review? Rich?
Yes. As I recall, or even just thinking about it, stream of consciousness now, there's a couple of points. First would be if we're, you know, during that more in the fall time period, sorry, more in the winter time period, there's more of an opportunity based on weather conditions, things of that nature. And at that time, are we appropriately operationally have the things ready, right, things, to enable a quick transition without, within a moment's notice of saying, because a moment's notice could be the kid's already gone. So what is the process for them to have all the materials that they need on a, you know, on a daily basis so that the next day might be an e-learning day, you know, that type of thing? The second, so that was more just the function is of that particular process. The second thing, just hearing lots of feedback about when we have e-learning and the amount of, I forget the right terminology, but the unstructured time period, meaning, you know, go do your worksheet, bad worksheet on your own versus some type of structured time where they're actually doing something, that there was a lot of time periods where, you know, if you think about it, the kid, you know, not so much the eighth grader, but more of the first grader, second grader, needs parental supervision because the, that time period or the educational learning is intended to be offline versus online. And so is that the appropriate mix that we have, we're thinking?
Other questions or thoughts? Of course, the review itself can obviously bring up questions and further investigations and discussions. So, Dr. K, do you have?
Yeah, I was just going to add, so if we did have just a review of the currently approved plan, it may allow for more opportunities to talk about what portion is structured, what portion is not structured, what's the intent of the plan, and then a flow chart of if there is feedback that's not positive, where do we go first? But I think understanding what is the expectation on every educator first is important from kindergarten through eighth grade because it's a difference. So I think that would be helpful, maybe just to have the review of what is the currently approved plan. And just as a reminder, the district does have to approve an e-learning plan in order for the district to use it, and we would only use it for the five emergency days max. So if there was some catastrophe where you had 20 days off, large snow, and then an earthquake, you only are required to use it for five emergency days, nothing beyond that. So I also just want to cautious, caution us around how much investment we give to the five days, not that five quality education days aren't important, I respect that, but when we review it, I just want to caution us that it's only for five emergency days. Currently, right now, we put the five at the end of the school year in this current calendar. So if there was a traditional snow day, we're just adding on one more day. The e-learning plan allows us to utilize the day as a day of learning, therefore not adding that snow day. So I like the idea of just coming back and talking through, what is that plan that we have currently approved, and then ask some questions about where, where's the structure, where's the nonstructure, are there opportunities for improvement?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Kind of an anecdotal question, but I'd rather ask it now in case there is some way to more inform the conversation. I don't recall hearing any of this directly, but I think it was discussed somewhat. So on an e-learning day, right, many of our teachers live very close in our same communities. It's highly likely that the same storm is impacting them. Many of our faculty and staff and teachers are also parents. So I just, like I say, it's kind of anecdotal, but like, I want to make sure that we're mindful of that, right? Because we just approved a substitute teacher plan, right? Substitute teachers on any given day is an issue. Somehow or another, just kind of factor that in because, you know, if we go the e-learning day as kind of our rule of thumb as opposed to having it be a snow day or whatever, teachers, many of them have to parent as well. So if we're expecting them to be in a virtual classroom, now they've got to get coverage for the children. Whereas if we have a snow day, parents have to cover their children whether we have e-learning or not, right? Or there's an emergency situation, they're not coming to school, but teachers are in a unique situation. So I just, however that looks, I'm not asking for data, I'm not asking for a report, but I think we need to be mindful of that because we're asking teachers to do, you know, sometimes two jobs that day. So just something to think about.
Thank you, Brian. Are there other questions?
To build a little bit on Brian's comment, I was going to ask that if we do revisit this, because I've heard a lot of the same things from parents as well, if we make sure that we get feedback from staff about what that looks like when they're on the screen, what realistically that looks like for a first-grade teacher versus an eighth-grade teacher, and that we listen to all voices involved.
Thank you, Liz. Well, thank you, everyone, for refreshing on that topic, and again, it's going to be coming up soon. So thank you, and thank you, Dr. K.
Mr. President, I sneaked in at the end. No, I just, I want to build on to what my colleagues are saying because it was a while ago, and as the colleagues brought this up, I think possibly one of the reasons this came up is that snow day, and you're right, they don't come up, the one that came up came up after many years, but there was a lot of feedback from communities to hear all perspectives. And also, I'd also like to hear the perspectives of our surrounding districts who decided to take a snow day, you know, to Brian's point, possibly for those reasons. So when we're gathering information to make an informed decision as board members, So when we gathering information to make an informed decision as board members, and this is kind of operational, so we might be kind of going to both, kind of going to a different area here, but really getting that perspective of the districts that did take a, take that snow day versus having an e-learning day, how did that go? And, you know, just so we're, we're making sure, because there was a lot of feedback for this.
Thank you, Anisha. Okay, then we are going to move forward. The board will be going back into closed session to continue working on the same topics we announced earlier. The board cannot take any action during closed session, and we will not be taking any action when we return to open session afterwards. So with that, could we please have a motion to adjourn open session and return to close?
Mr. President?
Yes, Kevin.
I recommend that the board resume the closed session for the same topics as stated earlier this evening.
Thank you, Kevin. In a second, please?
A second.
Thank you, Anisha. And Lana, if you could please call the roll.
Yes.
Nierman?
Yes.
Jogi?
Yes.
Scapalato?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Sereniglia?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We'll see you in closed session.[1793.71]